In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Shall we all stand and pledge the allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Chase.
Here.
Mr. Cobal. Mr. La Court.
Here.
Ms. MacGyver.
Here.
Mr. Metler.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Ponizak.
Here.
Mr. Oniaka. Chairman Arsini will be in attendance shortly. He's running late from picking up his son at basketball.
Okay. Minutes are next of the regular meeting of December the 4th. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
I'll move the minutes.
I'll second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver.
Yes.
Mr. Metler.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Ponizak.
Yes.
Resolutions are next. Devon Realty PLN 13-00011.
Move the resolution.
I can't hold on to this, but you have a, I think there's a typo on the resolution for Devon Realty, page six, target E. The applicant shall also more landscaping out. I don't think that's the right word.
We're doing, which one is it?
I think it's supposed to be add, add more. Instead of, instead of the word and, it's supposed to be add more.
Okay. We'll change that.
Move the resolution with the correction. Second.
Okay. Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver.
Yes.
Mr. Metler.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Ponizak.
Yes.
Next resolution of John Schlow LLC, PLN 13-00012.
Move the resolution. Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Court.
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver.
Yes.
Mr. Metler.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Ponizak.
Yes.
Next, discussion of vouchers for Martin Murphy, December retainer of $833, and Addie Dean, resolution preparation, $112.50.
Move to approve.
All those, we can, all those in favor?
Aye.
I did not, I did not get a copy of this, so, in my packet, so I will abstain.
I have no problem with it, but I just don't feel I should vote on something I haven't
seen.
Very good. Anyone opposed? All right. Our first hearing, E&amp;J Equities.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chairperson, or Acting Chairperson.
Excuse me. I like to recuse myself from voting.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna leave.
Yes.
Okay?
You're recused.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Chairperson, members of the Planning Board, members of the public, my name is Francis P. Linis. My offices are at 21 Clyde Road here in sunny Somerset, New Jersey. I'm pleased to represent E&amp;J Equities on this application this evening. This is an application for conditional use approval, preliminary and final site plan approval, and two bulk variances. This, just to bring the board up to date, and by way of background, I have a chronology of how we got here as opposed to getting there. On April 27, 2010, the township adopted a billboard ordinance permitting non-digital billboards as a conditional use in the M2 zone. My client challenged the ordinance for its exclusion of digital billboards on constitutional grounds. On January 4, 2013, Judge Bucksbaum, in a case entitled E&amp;J Equities versus the Township of Franklin, invalidated the township's ban on digital billboards as violative of free speech guarantees of the United States and the New Jersey Constitution. On January 10, 2013, we filed this application before this board for construction of a digital billboard. On January 14, the township requested that the court stay the proceedings and stay the court order and stop the process. On February 4, the township filed an appeal of Judge Bucksbaum's decision with the appellate division. Again, on March 1, 2013, the township applied to the appellate division for an emergency motion to stay Judge Bucksbaum's opinion. This was denied. The township then moved again for a stay on a non-emergent basis, and the appellate division again denied the stay on April 11, 2013. On April 9, 2013, Mr. Dominack, the zoning officer, deemed this application complete. On May 24, 2013, Mr. Dominack, as the zoning officer, made a determination that this application was properly within the jurisdiction of the planning board. On August 1, 2013, the Board of Adjustment affirmed Mr. Dominack's decision that the jurisdiction of this application lies with the planning board. I've had discussions with Mr. Dominack, and we've memorialized an agreement that Mr. Dominack will talk about regarding the if-as-and-buts of the impact of the litigation on this application. It allows the application to move forward with the applicant proceeding at his own risk, which we understand. But make no doubt about it, we're properly before the planning board right now to present this application. I also want to point out that I did supply your counsel with a legal memorandum regarding the New Jersey Roadside Sign and Outdoor Advertising Act and the fact, and the impact that it has on this application. I have with us four witnesses this evening. We've gone over all the staff reports. It appears that, according to Mr. Healy's report, that we are in compliance with most of the provisions of the ordinance, and he just wants to hear testimony on certain provisions so that we make a record with respect to that. My four witnesses are John Slas, he's a representative of the applicant, E&amp;J Equities. My second witness will be Mitchell Arndman. Mitch prepared the site plan, that's before the board this evening, and he'll be testifying. The third witness I have is Glenn Weeb. Glenn Weeb is a lighting expert, specifically a digital lighting expert, and he's here tonight and will provide testimony. I have Elizabeth Dolan. Elizabeth Dolan is the applicant's traffic consultant, and she's gonna pinpoint one or two provisions of the ordinance specifically relating to the issue of potential visual obstruction to traffic. And then finally, I have John Chadwick. John will be testifying to the two C variances. This is an existing through lot. The town prohibits through lots, and he'll provide the testimony as to why there should be a variance. I note for the record that Mr. Healy does not have any technical objections to the variance. The other variance we're seeking is a building lot is supposed to abut a street giving access to the property, and that's, of course, so that emergency vehicles could come in and out of the property. We don't have access to a public street, but we have access through an easement similar to the easement that the Board of Adjustment approved on the static billboard application, which was approved by this township. So without further ado, I'd like to proceed, I think, Mr. Bryce.
Yeah, if I could at this point, Council and Madam Vice Chair. Just as part of identification, I think that there is, on this board as appropriate, a member of the governing body that has been involved in this case through its circuitous route through the township, and I believe Mr. Thomas was also on the zoning board that also heard this. I did have an opportunity to consult with council beforehand about this. There is no conflict that we can identify within the municipal family and your participation herein. I don't believe either of you have a direct pecuniary interest or any other interest in the application. But with that being said, as long as you guys can confirm that you will be unbiased moving forward with the application as going forward, I think that we have consensus among council that there is no conflict.
I have no problem.
Yeah, and Frank, if I could just, 30 seconds, go over, on December 12, I sent a memo to Mr. Linis explaining the various situations where they're, you know, they're proceeding at their own risk with it being in litigation, and if they get an approval or certain approvals, what's the town's position? He subsequently sent a memo in response on December 16. I responded with another email on the 16th, and on the 17th, he responded, and we're in complete agreement. The attorneys are in agreement. What we do is we'll introduce this, I don't know, maybe Board One, as these four sheets of paper, and when the resolution is written, the attorneys can agree to incorporate the appropriate language. Everyone's in agreement, so really don't need to spend any time on it, we just wanted to get that out of the way before the application.
So I'll mark those email correspondences in the memo as B1 as a collective.
Aye. That's correct. Thank you. Want to be sworn in, Mr. Slas?
Just raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Jonathan Slas, J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N-S-L-A-S-S.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Slas, what is your relationship to the applicant, E&amp;J Equities? I represent E&amp;J Equities. Okay. And you're familiar, of course, with this particular application, this application pending before the board? Yes, I am. Okay. Now, I'm gonna show you what we previously filed with the board as part of this application. It's in the form of a letter I addressed to Christine Woodbury, the Secretary to the Franklin Township Planning Board, on May 9, 2013, and I attached to it two documents. One is an outdoor advertising license issued by the Department of Transportation, and the second page includes a, an active permit for a digital billboard at this location. Okay? I'd ask you to identify that. This is the outdoor advertising license, the first page, and the second page is the permit. Okay. Thank you. Like to mark that A1 and hand it to the board.
Certainly. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Slas, you're familiar with Mr. Healy's memorandum, are you not? Yes, I am. Okay. Mr. Healy, for the record, issued a memorandum in this matter. It's a memorandum dated December 12, 2013, and in that memorandum, he talks about compliance with certain provisions of the ordinance. And then he's soliciting some testimony on certain other provisions. So I want to direct the board's attention and your attention to section 3E, and that appears on page six of the memorandum. Okay? Are you familiar with that? Okay. It states that "No billboard shall display any words or symbols that connotes traffic control commands, including but not limited to stop or danger, or which may be confused as a sign displayed by a public authority." If this board were to grant the approval, will you commit to complying with that particular section of the ordinance? Yes, I'm familiar with it, and yes, I commit to complying. Okay. All right. Now, also on that same page, and that's page six, item 3C, there's a section of the ordinance that indicates "No billboard or billboard display area would be painted with or composed of any material of a fluorescent, phosphorescent, or holographic material." If this board were to favor you with approval, will you commit to that? Yes. On that very same page, item 3D, on page six, "No billboard shall display pornographic or sexually indecent and/or obscene pictures, et cetera." You familiar with that provision of the ordinance? Yes, I am. Are you committing to this board and to the public that in the event this board favors you with approval, that your billboard would comply with that particular section? Yes, I do. And then finally, you're aware of the fact, and I'm looking at page seven of Mr. Healy's memorandum, more specifically, item G, which is 112-53.1D1, states "Any application for construction of a billboard shall require compliance with the roadside sign, control, and outdoor advertising act and such other laws and applicable regulations related to the construction of structures and/or billboards." Again, should you, you already have your DOT approval, which is issued by the roadside sign, control, and outdoor advertising act, but will you agree to continue compliance with that, should this board grant the approval? Yes, I do. Okay. All right. I have no further questions of Mr. Slas.
Page five.
Five.
A and B.
Right. We have other witnesses for that, but I'll get his affirmation. We're gonna have another witness here tonight, but you'll commit that "No billboard display area or billboard or any portion will rotate, move, produce noise, or smoke, give the illusion of movement, display video, or other changing imagery." Is that correct? That is correct. All right. I might point out, and I had discussions with Mr. Healy, the, this provision of the ordinance has been declared unconstitutional. The court ordered that, that, that ordinance, that portion of the ordinance be excised. What I pointed out to Mr. Healy, that DOT regulate, we comply with the DOT regulations, but this ordinance doesn't exist anymore. Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Healy?
No. Well, yes, and I think the, I agree that that's, this section was the section that was invalidated, although I do appreciate the fact, the testimony that was just provided, that you, that you are agreeing to comply with the first part about not having, not displaying video, giving the illusion of movement, producing noise, or smoke, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
And then obviously, the part about the digital display.
It will change.
Yeah, there will be change in imagery. Just to be clear on this, the billboard's not gonna rotate, it's not gonna move, it's not gonna produce noise or smoke, and it's not gonna give the illusion of movement or display video.
Yeah.
You're not gonna have a video.
That was the testimony I was, I was hoping you'd give the board.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. B.
Before you leave that.
Yes.
Who stopped that illusion of movement, right? So if it's gonna be a digital billboard, all of the other provisions like this, not, excuse me, not display video, but you're gonna have changing imagery, you're gonna have all those things, correct?
Correct.
The digital board, portions of this will remain effective.
That's correct. By the way, the court struck the entire, yeah, the court struck the entire ordinance out.
And we don't have anything that, to come back at you and say we have an ordinance that says you'll do it this way.
That is correct.
We are gonna hear testimony from somebody who's going to describe the technology and how it changes and the manner of the change.
Yes. Yes, I got a couple of.
Your ear is just struck out completely.
That's correct.
You're gonna reintroduce testimony tonight.
That's correct.
It's gonna set the criteria.
That's correct. So that everybody has a clear understanding of what this billboard would do, not do, or have any issues there, because we do have to be clear on that. All right. We do have another witness on the blinking lights, but I want to hear it from you, too. If this board were to approve the billboard, the billboard, no billboard should be illuminated by means of intermittent flashing or blinking lights, so you agree to that, is that correct? I agree to that. Okay.
Excuse me, let me ask you another question. In that respect, I don't think you're high enough to require aviation avoidance lights, but if you do, I don't think you would do any testimony that says, because otherwise...
Mitch Arndman is gonna testify. That's, that's exactly correct. That's exactly correct. The height of the billboard's 45 feet, and it's not, it's lower than a bunch of things.
It's probably the building around it.
That's right. Okay. I have no further questions of Mr. Slas.
Oh, go ahead, Ted.
Mr. Slas, who actually controls what is shown on the billboard?
Okay. We, we have an advertising agency that will be accepting, accepting advertisements from customers. We will either get completed pictures, or, or we will provide that artwork, but we're the, we're the final arbiters of what gets put up.
You, you actually will. You don't devolve that to an advertising company.
The advertising company is owned by my brother Craig Slas and I. The point is, you control it, though, is that? We control it. Not the advertising company. There will not be an advertising company. There is not a situation where somebody's gonna hold money and say, "Put this objectionable stuff up." I, I've continuously operated in Franklin Township since 1970. When I say I, our family, I was pretty young back then, but we have been a long-term citizen. We plan to be here for a long time to come, and you, when you live in a community, you act appropriately.
Okay. So you, in effect, you are the advertising company, not A, it isn't E&amp;J Equities that is going to be.
E&amp;J Equities is, is a corporation that owns the land.
Yeah.
And is applying for this billboard.
Yeah. I just want to be sure that we don't get in a situation where the responsibility is passed off to some distant advertising company, and we don't know what we'll get.
There's no plan.
But okay, if you're local, we know where to find you.
So to make it clear, you and your brother, who are basically E&amp;J Equities with trusts and whatever, but regardless of the name of the company that may be formed to control the billboard, you'll basically be controlling the billboard? That's correct. It should be noted, even though this is a little bit of a side point, E&amp;J Equities represents the names, the first initial of the first four grandchildren that my father has, or had. So this company's even named after our children, just as another tie to where our hearts are.
Okay. I wasn't aware of all of these close relationships.
No other questions for this witness? Okay.
I have to listen to you. I agree.
Do you want me to step down?
Yeah. Well, usually, they, as long as you maintain your witnesses here until the end, they like to streamline it by having.
Don't leave the premises.
Money at the end.
All right. Mitch Arndman?
Mr. Arndman knows that. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Arndman.
All right. Mr. Arndman, would you give the board and members of the public the benefit of your professional background qualifications and experience?
Licensed professional engineer, still licensed in the state of New Jersey, and have testified before this board for about 20.
He's been before many times. He's accepted.
All right. Okay. All right, Mr. Arndman, were you retained by, you and your firm, the Reynolds Group, were retained by the applicant, E&amp;J Equities, to prepare the site plan that's before the board this evening?
Yes.
And to perform some other functions?
Yes, we were.
Okay. And would you just briefly describe the site and what we're proposing?
Certainly.
And if you have an exhibit, we can mark that A2.
Is that the colorized site plan? Yes. This is Billboard Plan SP1, and colorized, exactly. Thank you. So, again, what we have before you, it's as far as the lengthy site plan testimony, which you hear me give on many occasions, traffic, stormwater, et cetera, we are relegated to one billboard being placed on the site. We have Davidson Avenue on the right side of the property, which is the Easterly Road. We have Elizabeth Avenue on the westerly side, and this is Route 287 on the north of the property. The property in question is Lot 12.02, which is this whole large parcel, which goes all the way out to Elizabeth Avenue. Access will be via an easement through Lot 33.03, which is the RotoClip property, which goes out to Davidson Avenue. Billboard, as we have shown here, is a, is a wing shape, and as Mr. Healy went through the criteria, and I will as well, it meets the, the height, the V-shaped spacing, et cetera, of the ordinance, all the setbacks, the distances to the buildings, and et cetera. We can go into that. Directly across the highway is a cemetery. The nearest residence to the property line itself is 335 feet to the corner of the property on Fordham Road. The next lots that we have here on Norfolk Road is the next one to the west, Thomas Road and Marcy Street. As you proceed further, the residences become approximately 640 feet. 800 feet is the other one off of Norfolk, over 1,200 feet off of Thomas, and over 1,500 feet off of Marcy Street. So those are the distances as you get westerly on the property. Again, across the street and to the east, there's, are no residences, there's a cemetery for a good stretch, and, and office buildings as you go further up there. So that is the general property. Again, access will be through Davidson Avenue. There's a paved drive which comes all the way through the RotoClip property and continues and crosses the stream that is here on site, and we're just on the other side of that stream, and that's a general property outline.
All right. All right, Mr. Arndman, you know we're here for a number of approvals, conditional use, preliminary and final site plan. Let's talk about conditional use approval, and then we'll get to the site plan. Did you have an opportunity to review Mr. Healy's report on ordinance compliance?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And in connection with that report, I'm gonna refer you specifically to those areas where Mr. Healy is looking for testimony. And more particularly, let's see what you have to say here. I don't think there's anything you have to say.
No.
Okay. We have our other witness to come in on the other items, okay.
One, one comment, it's actually on the plan, the structure itself, and we had a note, will not be fluorescent, the structure itself, we noted on the plan, I think, was that black or flat gray, and that's, that's as much detail as I think we need from us.
Right. But you're certainly in agreement that where Mr. Healy says we comply with the ordinance, we do comply with the ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the one little footnote that Mr. Healy put on, I shouldn't shock the board, his dimension was correct versus my dimension, so I will adjust that on the plan.
Uh-huh. So Mr. Healy was right.
He was, he was, but.
Happens from time to time.
They are, they were both still in compliance, yes.
Okay. The other memorandum we have is from Mr. Howke. He's the Assistant Township Engineer, May 3, 2013. Can you, will you, and do you comply with all the issues raised by Mr. Howke in his general review comments?
Yes, to all that. The only item I'd like just to put a little more on the record for clarification, item number three, which deals with a flood hazard area permit, we had submitted to DEP and had received a applicability determination, and the project qualifies for a permit by rule, so we can resubmit that. But basically, that says that the structure's not going in or around any regulated area. It's, it's accessed at a portion where we've already crossed the stream, so there are no new impacts to the stream or wetlands corridor.
Does that mean you're done with DEP, or you need to?
We're done.
Okay.
So we're done with DEP, and you need no other permits from DEP? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And item five, you do acknowledge that we do have NJ DOT approval?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Now, what about outside agencies? Where do we stand with the outside agencies?
Soil erosion we have, and county we have, and DNR is just pending.
Okay. All right. Okay. I'm gonna refer you now specifically to Mr. Healy's site plan comments in his memorandum, again, which is dated on December 12, 2013, a couple of days ago. Other site plan comments in number four, and that's on the, page seven of Mr. Healy's report. He's requesting a visual impact analysis simulating the appearance of the proposed digital billboard from various surrounding locations. He did recommend simulations from Fordham, Norfolk, Thomas, Marcy, Mercury, Nassau, and from both directions along Interstate 287. Can you, can you start your visual impact analysis?
Sure. What we did was that they, there was, we had a crane test basically out, out on site. Crane went up. Crane went up, a beam was hung out there, and we took photographs along 287. The beam, as you know, and you've heard the history of this application, we wanted to make sure we were at kind of the most restrictive, so we set that at 50 feet. So if there were ever any changes, we wanted to be clear that we were not deviating above that, so these photos were taken at 50 feet. You'll see there, in this packet here, there are eight photographs, and probably the best, if you want, is if you go to the back sheet and fold that out, then you could...
Before we do that, Mr. Arndman, I can go to Marcus.
Certainly.
E3.
Mr. Arndman, do you identify what Marcus A3?
Sure. What we...
It's actually more important tonight, because it's going to be done via the video instead of this.
Okay, would you identify what we've marked as A3?
Certainly. A3 is a grouping of eight photographs, and the last page, which is labeled Sheet PH-1, is basically a photo-location map. And just again, to clarify, the pictures, the six pictures along the road, you see those photo locations. There are two additional pictures, which are basically at the end of Fordham, and I apologize, for some reason, in the computer, those circles in that cul-de-sac image wouldn't stay on, so seven and eight are basically at the end of the cul-de-sac there. I can explain where they are. So if you look at pictures one and two, starting, those are east and west along 287, those are both at the 500-foot mark. So again, 50 feet high, 500 feet, each of those are in the shoulder location, since we had to, you know, pull over to get a good... Yes? Yeah, I'll get how we superimpose that location. Yes. Yes, that's a good... Yes, you do. Not a problem. The beam itself, actually, if, from the distance, you had to be looking for just the beam, because not very visible, but we knew where it was, so pictures one and two are at 500 feet. So what we did, down the highway to a digital billboard in a similar situation, took a picture at 500 feet away from that digital billboard on two angles, and then we took that shot, superimposed it, and we, you know, checked to make sure most of the billboards are the same, 14 by 68, that's the industry standard, it's a maximum and industry standard. So we took that photograph and superimposed that on that beam, so you could get a photo representation of what this would look like.
By the way...
That's how this came about.
The depictions of the billboard, that would apply, whether it's a static billboard or whether it's a digital billboard, correct?
Exactly. This is a daytime shot, static, digital, this gives you a good representation from that distance of what you would graphically see. Our digital expert will talk a little bit more about the lighting behind it, but it's a good representation of what you would see from the distance. So that shots, one and two, are both at 500 feet. Similarly, from 1,000 feet are shots three and four, and again, you can still see the billboard as you're coming up on it in each location. The graphics get, you know, not as clear, a little harder to see, but you can make out that you're coming upon an image there, and there's a billboard. So that's shots three and four. And at 1,500 feet, which starts to get, you know, the limit of seeing any of the graphics is shots five and six, again, east and westbound, 500 feet from the billboard. From the center, more central lanes, obviously, you'd have some more visibility, you'd have more of a direct angle than the shoulder we were on. I think they accurately represent what you would be seeing on site. The other shots we took are from Norfolk, and there's shots seven and eight. So from, just on number seven, you could see from the cul-de-sac, what we did is actually go up right to the edge, so we walked off the pavement, close to the fence, you can see the fence in the foreground there, so it would be the most representation all from anybody on Fordham on the roadway there. It shows...
That's Fordham, you're talking about Fordham?
From Fordham, yes.
So I think you said Norfolk before.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
It's Fordham?
It is Fordham, that is correct. So from Fordham, off the edge, and you can see there's a mix there of deciduous and some evergreens. This was back a little bit. If you drive up and down there, in some locations, obviously, you've seen the DOT had about a year and change back, it put other evergreens in different locations along the highway there and well, but this was a representational picture at the end of Fordham. Picture eight, then, is pretty much from the center of the cul-de-sac, and so that would, you would be more of the view you would see from the house. And I'll go over to the exhibit A2 here, not from the closest house, which is actually kind of more on the corner, but from the house, more at the end of the cul-de-sac, which is facing. Now, if you're familiar with these houses, they typically do not have windows out the side, because obviously, that's 287, and also, the closer houses are more directly toward the end of the billboard, and don't get that full view shot of it. They see more of a skewed angle at the billboard. So even though the house on the easterly side of Fordham is closer, the house that's further away, over 500 feet, is looking more straight ahead, and again, that picture kind of right in the middle of cul-de-sac, and there you can see, again, the mixture of the lower trees. Some of these trees are just, not fully, but just coming with the leaves out and the evergreen trees there. So if you look, if you can see it down above the red car, but below the highest trees, that's where you can see the sign in that location. So those are the shots. I know in the review by Mr. Healy, there was questions about shots from the other locations. We concentrated at the end of the roadway in this location, as they were the closest. Sometimes, when we're out at the ends of the roads, and it was just the beam, as we discussed, you could barely make out the beam, and you really had to look for it. I wasn't entirely confident that we could do a photo rendering of those to really depict them as well, and I think it's more of a... You have to extrapolate a little bit to think about it, but if you look back at my 1,000-foot photos, and then the 1,500-foot photos on 287, you'll understand how, as you get further away, as those houses are at the ends of the other cul-de-sacs, those images shrink significantly. You do have similar vegetation at the end of those cul-de-sacs, a mixture, evergreens, deciduous, and you also have, from several of the houses, you actually have views blocked by the houses in front of them. So if I would go up to Marcy Street and point to the, kind of the view shed at the billboard, going towards the billboard, you have, you know, a house at the end of Thomas that is blocking the view from the end of the cul-de-sac. From the one house, you have to look through several houses on Thomas and Norfolk to see that full distance across. So again, with that great distance and the difficulty in doing a true representation, we felt this would be, kind of show the most, or the most graphic that anybody would see it from the property, reducing greatly as you get further away.
All right, I believe Mr. Healy agrees with us that we have ordinance compliance. What's the requirement of distance between the residential property line and a billboard?
300 feet.
And we meet that requirement, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's the requirement of the ordinance?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the board's going to hear from Mr. Wiebe.
Could I just ask one question on the photos that you supplied before you leave it? Are traveling on north, traveling on 287 north and south, it's not going to make any difference, but as I recall, this is a double-sided board, and as I also recall, the boards, the sides were angled to minimize the view to the four cul-de-sacs. Now, does your, do your photographs truly accurately represent that minimizing, or can we conclude that what we're seeing in the picture from the cul-de-sacs would actually be a little less clear because of the angles of the boards when they're constructed?
Will be a little more narrow. You skipped ahead.
So it would be, the effect would be a little less than what's visually represented on the photographs?
That's correct. The next conditional use requirement, one of the next ones I was going to get to was the maximum angle deflection that we have. So per your ordinance, it's 35 degrees is that interior angle is the maximum you could have, and that would face more towards the residence at the end. We've taken, you know, squeezed that down by 5 degrees to point it more along 287 and somewhat less towards the residence. So the pictures you have, and it's, I believe they're as accurate as we can get them, not an exact science to get that angle of the beam, but I would say that what you're looking at is the worst case, and it should be better with the angle that we've reduced the billboard.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to hear from Mr. Wiebe on lighting, but just to set the table for Mr. Wiebe, Franklin, can you, you're familiar, of course, with...
I just wanted to point out one thing to Mr. Arndman. You've submitted an LOI that's dated 2002 and clearly stated to be good for five years. Are you going to get a new one?
With the Permit Extension Act, we're covered with that. And when we sent in with the, it didn't specifically state, but the new application to DEP that we did obtain the permit on, that kind of subsumes it all in there, but with the Permit Extension Act, we're still good.
I agree with that, but typically, what the DEP does is issue a letter stating that it's still good. I mean, that's what they've done in the past in all our other, in all of other applications, where you had an LOI that expired, you get something from them that indicates that it's...
On a good day.
I mean, that's what you've given us before.
Yeah, from a legal standpoint, the Permit Extension Act automatically extends it.
It's not in any type of special environment.
No, it's not special category, not Highlands, obviously, or any of those categories.
And they gave him a permit anyway.
Yeah, and again, the new permit does cover all that.
It's fine, I just, I know, in the past, you've given us stuff when it's expired, I just, I didn't know if that was, what was going to happen again.
Yeah, I think we're, I would say we're covered with what we have, that's acceptable.
The Permit Extension Act we have always with us.
All right, just to set the table, and then we'll go through the rest of it for Mr. Wiebe's testimony. You're familiar with Franklin Township's regulations regarding foot candles and light spillage?
Yes.
Just so his testimony makes sense, what is the regulation for light spillage on properties?
Certainly, and since he's the expert in the billboard itself, he's going to talk about that. As you know, I do the parking lot lighting designs regularly, and typically, you have one foot candle plus, as an average, you have a half a foot candle as a minimum, and going off the property line, you have .1 foot candles or less, so you don't have spillage on any neighbors. Mr. Wiebe has prepared an exhibit, which you'll see, and the foot candles, and we typically don't get into this, because the parking lot lighting doesn't fine-tune this much. He's talking about numbers of .03 foot candles, so it's well below anything that we're used to seeing and designing for, for typical parking lot lighting spillage.
Okay, item 4B, again on page seven of Mr. Healy's report, what color would the pole and the structural supports be?
Yeah, that'll be flat gray or black.
Okay.
It's noted on the plan as well.
Oh, it's already noted on the plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Item C, would any lighting, to answer Mr. Pettit's question, any lighting be required by the FAA?
No, or under the height that it would come into play.
And again, this is a 40-foot-high proposal?
Yeah, 45, correct.
Zone allows 50 feet?
Fifty, and surrounding buildings are in excess, well in excess of that.
Okay. Item D, performance bond or other assurances? I've worked out with Mr. Dominack, the assurances that the board would need if this application would be approved, is that correct, Mr. Dominack?
Yes.
Okay. E, any, I think you did that already, but we have all our NJ DEP approvals.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Tree removal, does your plan demonstrate the extent of tree removal, if any, within the I-287 right-of-way?
There'll be none within the 287 right-of-way proposed.
None, okay. All right, the only other reports that have been issued, and I direct the board's attention to John House, the Director of Fire Prevention, May 23, 2013, Fire Prevention has no objections to this application. That becomes relevant with respect to the easement access for the fire trucks to get through to the billboard in the event there's something going on with the billboard. Okay, I refer you directly to Mr. Howard Chee's report dated May 10, 2013. Can we comply, that's DPW, can we comply and will we comply with each and every item?
Yes, no problem.
Okay. All right, from a site design standpoint of this billboard, and you've done the site design on the static billboard, from an engineering perspective, does the plan work?
Yes, as I stated, there's minimal site clearing, the coverage chain is infinitesimal, there's no stormwater implications, no sewer or water capacity questions with this, so from a site standpoint, it works.
All right, and just to help Dr. Chase out, area of disturbance for the, roughly...
With the billboard itself, we're talking 20 square feet, and then we're trenching a utility line to get power to it.
All right, I have no further questions.
Are there any questions for this witness by members of the board?
I just had one question. Earlier, you said the standard height was 14 by 68, but on the plan, it's marked as 14 by 48?
48, yeah.
Is that, just want to be clear that it's...
Yeah. I misspoke there, yes. 672 feet is the max, so the plan stands, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just one quick clarification, the actual height, it's measured from the elevation of the outside stripe, can you just clarify that?
Yes, there's a separate detail on that same sheet where we show that, but I'll show it on the profile that you were looking at as well.
Really, just on the plans, we need to have the actual, I don't know if it, I looked for it, and see if it's actually showed the actual top elevation compared to the outside stripe, just demonstrating that 45-foot.
Yeah, it's SP2 in the middle sheet, you, I know it's, you were looking at this piece, on the other piece, we have it, we shot the edge of pavement on 287.
Okay, so it's on the plan.
And I'll make sure it's clear.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And that's where it's from.
Next witness.
Okay, Mr. Wiebe?
All right, just please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, could you please state and spell your name for the record?
Glenn Wiebe, G-L-E-N-W-I-E-B-E. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wiebe, will you give the board and members of the public who are here the benefit of your educational, professional qualifications, background, and experience?
Sure. I am an electronics engineering technologist, graduated out of DeVry University back in 1998. I have been working with Daktronics for the past 15 years, starting off with Daktronics as a technician on their help desk and installations and so on.
Well, just for the record, what is Daktronics?
Oh, sorry, Daktronics is a manufacturer of both small and large-scale digital displays, be it anything from the very small digital displays that you may see above a ticket window to, you know, all the way up to the large displays you may see in Times Square or stadiums, you know, that type of thing.
And Daktronics manufactured, and I take it manufactured, the billboard, digital billboard in South Mayfield on 287?
Correct, yes, correct. And so part of my job, sorry, and then for the past 14 years, I have been working as an applications engineer with Daktronics, which means that my job is to understand the various areas that our displays are going into, and to be able to understand what technology should go into those applications, be it mass transit type of applications, be it... should go into those applications, be it mass transit type of applications, be it, you know, roadside type of displays in front of on-premise or off-premise displays and so on. So that's been part of my job for the past 14 and a half years, and for the past eight years now, I have been heavily involved within the regulatory industry, helping both city councils and city members to understand the technology, to be able to write their ordinances according to what the technology is and what it isn't, but then also helping to work with our billboard customers to aid them in getting their permits, in helping, again, working with them, providing the information about the displays in all aspects, to be able to understand and be able to present that properly to the public.
And you're licensed in New Jersey?
I have, I am not licensed in New Jersey, though I have testified several times in New Jersey and-
Let's go over that, let's go over that. The, have you qualified as a digital lighting expert anywhere else in New Jersey?
Yes, both in New Brunswick, in Mount Euphrum, in, sorry, thank you, in Milburn, in Hackensack, and Rochelle Park as well.
And in those particular applications, they were applications for digital billboards?
Correct.
And what was the result of?
Those have all been approved.
All been approved?
Yes.
Okay, and you provided testimony on the lighting, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Support of that. All right, I would move-
We'll accept him due to his experience.
Very good. Now, part of your job, I take it, is you would provide technical resource for both internal and external customers?
That is correct.
Okay, and in this case, you were asked by E&amp;J Equities to look at what they were proposing as a digital billboard, and to provide information regarding what the technical components are of a digital billboard as it relates specifically to lighting.
Right, absolutely, correct, yeah, there, the intent is to be able to understand what the technology is and how that will impact the area in which the displays are going to be proposed here.
Okay, and part of your mission in this particular application was to review the sections of the Franklin Township billboard ordinance to assist the board in making a decision as to whether there is compliance with the spirit of the ordinance as it relates to lighting, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and I did inform you prior to your analysis that the ordinance provisions are written specifically for static billboards, non-digital, and so you had to make a presentation regarding complying with the spirit of the ordinance, since the actual ordinance itself doesn't apply to this application.
Right, absolutely, and so what we did was we took a look at the five different ordinances that were there in section C, 5, A through E, and just-
And those are the lighting standards of the ordinance, okay, so let's go over each one of them.
All right.
First C, 5, A, and B.
Sir, 5, A, and B, again, were really written around, as we know, traditional static billboard, and really don't take into scope of how the LED technology actually works. And so, in reality, LEDs are the actual light source that are used to project the image that is intended. And so what we're doing here is the LEDs are the light source, and by nature of an LED, its physical makeup, to adhere to the spirit of what we're trying to do, and that's to limit any overglow, limit any glare to the visual, to the audience and so on in surrounding areas, LEDs by their nature and their physical makeup are designed such that they have a very directional light source. And what I mean by is a traditional light source outputs its light at the same level in all directions, other than what is being obstructed by its physical, what it's being held in. But an LED, on the other hand, is designed to put the majority of its light source directly forward, and then as you get off to off angles, both in a horizontal plane and in a vertical plane, that light begins to diminish very quickly, until you reach what we would call a half-intensity point, both, in both directions, but at the same time, it diminishes very quickly in both directions. And so then, in addition to that, what we do with those LEDs is we adhere to, or we apply, a very sophisticated dimming system to those LEDs, so that, again, we bring them to a level at night where it's a very comfortable view. There's no excessive glare, there's no overglow, it's very comfortable, it's not like, and we've all seen some digital displays where they have them simply too bright, and you might want to look away because it's a little bit annoying. That's not what we do. Our company works very hard to bring everything to a very comfortable level that meets all the ordinances that we find our displays in the various cities and areas that they go into. And so that's systematically what we do.
And did you address all those, all the ordinances?
No, no, and then as far as C goes, again, C is about how that light is shielded from the vehicular traffic. Again, that pertains to a regular light bulb which would, you know, you don't want them to see the light, while in an LEDs case, if you shielded the light, you would have a blank display and it would render the display useless. Again, the intent here is simply to provide a display that's not over-glaring, that's not obtrusive to the drivers, and again, we apply the dimming systems to the LEDs that bring it into a very comfortable level.
Now, this dimming feature, that's unique to digital billboards, that static doesn't dim.
Correct.
All right, so you want to elaborate on dimming and how that works?
Absolutely. We employ what we call a three photocell, or three light sensor type of a dimming system. We have light sensors that point forward in front of the digital billboard, one that points behind, and one that points down, and so that we can be reading all areas that the display is living in. And we use a very sophisticated algorithm, mathematical equations, to determine what the appropriate light level is supposed to be, and so that even if there's traffic going by, we're not, you know, the level of the display is not going to go up and down because there's traffic coming, we don't look at that, and in fact, with our calculations, we ignore that. And then we set, again, the display to a very low level that's well within the regulations set forth.
All right, how about C-5D?
C-5D, the Digital Displays Control System, deals with intermittent flashing or blinking lights. The control systems that we use in our digital billboards are designed such that they do, absolutely do not allow any intermittent flashing, blinking, transitions of any sort. And that is something that we, as a company, don't even allow our customers to have access to. When that display goes out the door, it is locked down by our own technicians, all right, and so we hold the keys to that. And even though the customer may have access via software to change their messages, they are not allowed to change the feature that, you know, keeps it being a static digital billboard, and so they have no access to that.
Right, and you also heard Mr. Slas indicate, notwithstanding that, if he did have control over it, wouldn't be intermittent flashing or blinking lights.
Right, yeah, even if he was to try, even if he was to try and go outside the letter of the law and try and put something in that had flashing or blinking, the digital display, the control systems would see that and strip it out, and wouldn't allow it to play.
Okay, all right, as I understand the digital billboards, what you have are static images, correct?
Correct.
And they're set to play with specific hold times?
Right.
Okay, would you, did you get into that a little bit?
Absolutely.
What does that mean?
Sure, so the display is designed to adhere to, again, to regulations that are set forth, and it really all started with the Federal Highways Administration, who set out the rules of minimum hold times in between six to eight seconds, and what that means is-
Whoa, 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 the federal, let's be clear on this, all right, the Federal Highway Administration, what did you say?
Their recommendation for digital displays, for roadside digital displays, was a hold time of six to eight seconds.
All right, are you familiar with the NJDOT regulations?
Yes.
And what does New Jersey say about hold times?
New Jersey holds to the higher end of that at eight seconds.
All right, okay, now you want to go forward?
Sure, so what that entails is when one ad comes up, it must hold for a total of eight seconds, and then the next ad comes up and holds for another eight seconds, and so on through the rotation of the ads that they have. Now, the other caveat to that is that the transition time, according to, again, the Federal Highways Administration, was that the transition time must not be any greater than 1/10 of a second. So because they don't want slow motion, they don't want anything appearing moving again, and so it must not appear blinking, the transition time that we as a company use within our digital billboards is actually less than 1/100 of a second, and so it's very instantaneous, and it's very, you don't have any transition whatsoever, and it doesn't look like a blinking light, it doesn't appear as, you know, any of the things that we're trying to avoid.
Okay, all right, and then C-5E?
C-5E was really based around the fact that they, where you wanted the lights for the static billboard to be, in this case, the lights are the actual image itself and populate the face of the digital billboard, and that's how we create the image, and so it's just, it's just where the light is coming from is different.
Okay, now, can you tell us whether you have developed a light analysis system using to depict the light impact of light emitting dio displays?
Absolutely.
Give the board the benefit of your background.
Sure. A number of years ago, approximately six or so years ago, I worked with Dr. Ian Lewin of Lighting Sciences, he's a professional lighting engineer, certified as well, and together, we were working on how do we depict how bright a digital billboard is, and Dr. Lewin, working with members from the outdoor advertising associations and so on, developed a system whereby he could understand, or we could physically measure how bright a digital display was from a given distance based upon the size of the billboard itself. So in, for instance, a 14 by 48, your minimum measuring distance would be typically 250 feet, and a 13 by, or sorry, a 10 by 36 would be 175 feet or something to that effect. So there was, there was different distances that are based upon the size of the display.
Were you asked by the applicant to prepare a light analysis similar to what you discussed for this specific site at this specific location?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to mark as an exhibit A4, a light analysis for E&amp;J Equities, location block 502.02, lots 12.02 and 33.03. Did you prepare that?
Yes, I did.
All right, well, hold off while I pass this.
All right.
All right, give it to Vince, make sure that his attorney gets it, and they can share if there's not enough. Vince gets the-
I'm running short. Thank you. Is there one more?
Yeah, we can share. You can have this one, we can share.
Okay, before we get to A4, what went into A4?
What went into A4? So what I did here for A4 was I talked to the site planner and was able to get the site information from him, the location, the height of the billboard.
And that's Mitch Arndman, right?
Mitch Arndman, correct. And so he provided me with that information and the size of the billboard. Then what I do is I take a Google map shot of that, and I measure out the distances accordingly on Google Maps, and then what I do is, because this is a 14 by 48, again, its minimum distance for measuring is typically 250 feet, and then I went out in 100-foot increments throughout the viewing cone of that display, at least to the north side. I didn't bother doing the lower side simply just because of the buildings and the trees and so on, being there's no residential down in that area, but also just simply to be able to give you a bit more of a close-up view of the actual impact in the top area here. So then what we do is, we have a tremendous number of measurements of our displays at all these various angles, and so now, through all the data that we collect from them, we can put together measurements of how bright this display is going to be. And what we do is we start off in a worst-case scenario. So the values that you see here, first of all, are all in foot candles.
Wow, the blue, blue numbers are all in foot candles?
Yes, correct.
I remember years ago, we were talking about nits.
Yes, correct.
Drove the board crazy.
Absolutely.
The Board of Adjustment went absolutely wild with the word "nits" converted to foot candles. Now have the capability of converting nits to foot candles.
You remember that conversation we had with, you know, of talking about, it's like a 20-minute conversation to explain the nits, I remember that.
The nits became witch.
Yeah, I still don't understand nits. Foot candles, I understand.
All right, so-
So the blue, blue numbers represent foot candles?
Correct, they represent foot candles.
And again, you heard Mitch Arndman about what generally light spillage, I think he said .1?
Yes, .1.
Okay.
And so, again, this is a worst-case scenario, this is what we would call when the display is projecting an all-white image, meaning that there's really no content other than it being all white, and this is something, again, that would never happen at night, but we do this simply to present you with what a worst-case scenario would be, all right? Now, if you take a look, and unfortunately, this shows up better on my computer than it does on paper, but the second lineup on either side is a blue line that's going out, and that's at zero degrees perpendicular to the face of the display. And from there, I went up in 20-degree increments, all the way up to 60 degrees, and then the last part, I only went up to 75, because actually after, after that, the cutoff is so great that there's, there's no light coming any further in that direction, so it was, there's no use in having it there. But what you do see here is at the property line that is under question here, in Fordham Road at that first corner, it falls right in between 40 to 60 degrees, probably around that 52, 53 degree mark, and it falls in line at the 450-foot mark away from that digital billboard, is where that actually, where the house itself actually sits. Right in between there, on a worst-case scenario, you would be somewhere in the neighborhood of .02 to .03 foot candles, based upon what your, you know, the transition between 40 to 60, so you'd be right in that 0.2 to 0.3 foot candles that they could experience in a worst-case scenario.
Do the math, how does that relate to the .1?
Sure, as it relates to math, it'd be 1/10 of the minimum requirement of that .1 foot candle, so we're way underneath that threshold.
You just said 0.3.
Sorry, 0.03, thank you. Thank you very much.
He did the math.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, is that the illumination theoretically at the ground level?
Correct, at a ground level, a five-foot above-ground level.
And then that's, you know, again, that's the worst case, but essentially it's just a white screen.
Correct.
So it's maximum illumination.
At night, correct.
And it also indicates that it does not take into account obstacles, so-
Right.
It doesn't take into account the trees-
Exactly.
-that are in between.
Exactly.
Right, as a matter of fact, you have a note on the exhibit, you want to read that?
Sure. The digital LED display calculations are based on all LEDs being on, which generates a white background. Statistically, regular content utilization rate is 25 to 35%, and what that means is when people are playing their normal ads, it uses only about 25 to 35% of the LEDs that are on the face of the display. So in actuality, under normal running conditions, the values that you would experience are only about 25 to 35% of the worst-case scenario values that I've shown here. So it's even quite a bit lower than that .03 foot candles for actual running, you'd be at .01, which would be like, you know, considerably less.
So I think, I think the summary, if I could, just, you know, the big picture of the analysis that you've presented so far in terms of the visual impact analysis and this, basically is that people who, on Fordham Road, for example, that are the residents that are closest, basically, you know, through the trees, they might be able to see the billboard, but this analysis is showing that the light that's coming from the billboard is not going to be lighting up their backyards.
Correct.
It's basically imperceptible, almost immeasurable.
Right.
I don't even know how bright a 0.3 illumination level is.
Yeah, it's, well, it's-
.03.
.03.
.03.
It's 3/100 of a foot candle.
So they will be able to see it through the trees.
Right.
But it's not going to be lighting up their backyards.
Correct.
And were there to be- and the one-tenth, say that again, the one-tenth?
The one-tenth transition time from one ad to another. It must be no greater than one-tenth.
Okay.
Of a second, sorry. And we are, we are less than one one-hundredth of a second.
So, the technology is up to one one-hundredth?
Correct.
But the standard would be one-tenth?
One-tenth, yes.
Of a second. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question to, again, reaffirm something, and I seem to remember from another time I heard this. The eight-second segment also guarantees, in effect, I don't know how else to put it, that there are no stories being told. Each eight-second segment is independent, a complete ad, and the next one is not dependent on anything from the first one, so that there should be less distraction.
And there's no storyboarding. That's called storyboarding, I understand?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And again, these are static images that change every eight seconds.
Right.
I mean, for lack of a better term.
When I ask this question, I'm not asking for anything. I'm just trying to make sure that what I think is the case is the case. Years ago, and I do mean years ago, when this was first talked about, there was some question of using it for emergency purposes. And I assume that would involve flashing lights and that sort of thing. So, I assume no such purpose is being contemplated at this time, that if a plane were to crash on the South Middle Bush Road, this sign would be totally oblivious to that.
Correct. Even in emergency situations, like for amber alerts, silver alerts, the different emergency messaging, it still has its hold time. It still would not allow any blinking, flashing. It would strip that out.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no further questions. Mr. Weeb?
Are there any questions from the board for this witness?
I had a question. Since you're a lighting expert, if you're in the house, let's say, on Fordham Road on the second story, you have a white shade down, and it went from like a black image to a more bright white, what would that look like in your experience at that distance, given all these numbers and stuff?
You know, certainly part of it would depend on, you know, just how dark it was in that area. It, a lot of it depends on how much light is already in existence in that area, and they do have a fair bit with, you know, the light penetrating through the roadway, you know, from the vehicular traffic. The lighting, lighting science puts it this way. They, they say that if the amount of light being added into the area is less than one-third of the amount already in existence, then the human eye doesn't perceive it as a change in intensity or as, as being adding any light source. So, if, if what they had there existing outside the house, outside that room, was, in this instance, greater than .03 foot candles already in existence at that location, sorry, oh, approximately .03, then they wouldn't see that additional light source. They, it really wouldn't, wouldn't notice it.
Another quick question. Isn't it also true that the, the closest houses, and particularly those on Fordham Road, I believe there was testimony at another time, do, do not have windows that would even make it visible, make the billboard visible from within the house?
All right, Mr. Slas can answer that question, not this one.
I did not check out the houses.
That is true.
Okay.
A few questions, if I could. And this is just remembering some of the previous hearings that we've had before this township, and I just wanted to have a little bit more clarification. You had mentioned that the, it has ability to adjust for ambient light conditions, and I think.
Correct.
Before you had said there are three light meters?
Yeah, three, three photocells or three light sensors that are.
And I remember there being some testimony in one of the prior hearings about the levels of brightness, I think it was 256 different levels of brightness.
Correct. That is correct.
Is that, is that in this?
That is, that is correct.
Technology?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And there was also testimony about there being one level, one intensity level for all colors displayed.
That is correct.
Explain what that means and what impact, what effect that has.
One of the, one of the ways that, in our industry, one of the ways that people try and tout how many colors they have is to use the, the portion of memory that's set aside for controlling the dimming in with the colors. And so, when, when you start doing that, then different colors could have different intensity levels. What we do as a company is we keep those pieces completely separate. And so, what we do is, all the colors that we have within our digital billboard, we consider being dimmed in what I would call in a global setting, meaning that the, the same intensity of all colors across the entire portion of the display, there's no one section of the display that would have a brighter intensity. Now, the human eye does perceive different colors better than it does others, right? The human eye perceives red better, or blue even sooner than it does red, and so on. But the actual intensity of all those LEDs are exactly the same. We don't want particular colors to stand out as far as intensity is concerned.
Okay. And with respect to video, I, I think, again, you'd said that it's, it's going to be controlled so it won't display video.
Correct, yeah.
I recall there being testimony that, that the Dactronic billboard doesn't have the ability to do, is that, is that true?
Exactly. That, that particular control that's used does not allow for video to be played on it.
So, you can't, you, it doesn't even allow there to be embedded video?
Correct.
In the display?
Exactly.
Okay. And you had mentioned about the, the .1 second transition.
Mm-hmm.
I think another aspect of that is, I'm assuming that it, well, I should say, if you could clarify, that there wouldn't be any effects like dimming or fading, or, you know, one kind of, you know, fading and then going into another type of?
Right.
Is it just a, I'm assuming it's just going to be a static display, and then within an unchanging static display, and then just go automatically .1 seconds or less into another static display?
Absolutely, yeah. We, we don't use, utilize any transitions of any sort, whether it's fading or rolling or page effects of any sort. It's strictly one ad, it holds for eight seconds, and in our case, it changes in one one-hundredth of a second right to the next ad, and it's, it's there immediately. No entry effects, no exit effects.
Okay. And then, last question. You had mentioned that the, the amount of output, you know, illumination coming off of the billboard during the day is significantly greater than it needs to be at night.
Right, absolutely.
For obvious reasons. You have to compete with the sun.
Correct.
The big thing you have to compete with.
Correct.
Is there a level of output or illumination during the nighttime versus the day?
Absolutely. So, during the daytime, this is where nits come into play, unfortunately.
You had to ask a question about the nits.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. You know, could I give it to you on foot candles? Yeah, I could, but when you're dealing with foot candles in, in full sun, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. But the level is, is 100% full bright during the day, which is, in this case, 8,500 nits. But it dims down by standard to a level of 3% at night, so it goes down to 255 nits at night.
255 nits at night?
Yes. Or, or 3%.
So, that, I didn't realize, so, so the illumination level at night is 3% what it is during the day?
Correct.
Okay. So, that leaves my last question, I swear. What happens if the billboard, is there any possibility for the billboard to basically get stuck at an illumination level? Like, is there an, is there a possibility that it could get stuck at the daytime level and stay there into the night?
Electronics are electronics, and there's always, you know, a possibility to, for electronics to fail, especially when you put them outdoors. Now, we, we, again, we work very hard not to put something outside that's going to fail, and we do a tremendous amount of waterproofing and so on to, to do that. However, at the same time, then, we also put in three fail-safe methodologies. One, that constantly monitors the photocells or the light sensors. If they fail, it goes to a backup system that's on the controller itself that uses astronomical dimming. What that means is it has GPS coordinates to tell it where it's located on this earth, and then it also has a set of tables telling it what time of the year it is and when sunrise and sunset are during those days. And so, it will then automatically put it at its lowest level during those non-daytime hours. The third, if, for some reason, the controller fails, the display automatically goes blank. So, there's those three fail-safe methods that.
So, if all else fails, if those first two high-tech things don't work?
Yeah.
And if it's still stuck, basically, you pull the plug?
Exactly.
Okay. That's, you answered those questions. Thank you.
All right. You bet.
Madam Chairman, just one quick thing for the record. Chairman Arcini did show up at the meeting?
Yes.
But when I advised him that he had missed enough testimony that he would not be eligible to vote, and in fact, that we had seven board members, he chose, he chose to leave. So, he, he did attend the meeting, and he will be noted as present at the meeting.
Very good. Are there any questions, any more questions for this witness? If not, next witness.
Thank you, Glenn. Elizabeth Dolan?
You swear from a testimony, but he was, the truth holds nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Elizabeth Dolan, for the record, D-O-L-A-N.
All right, Ms. Dolan, would you give the board and members of the public who are here the benefit of your educational, professional background qualifications and experience?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional engineer, registered in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Delaware. And for the past 27 years, I think it is, I focused in the areas of traffic and transportation engineering. I have appeared in Franklin many times on many applications. Thank you.
All right. In addition to your, your expertise, do you have any expertise in, in digital billboards as it relates to traffic issues?
Well, I do have experience with this application, now going over, I guess, about three years, in addition to other digital billboards in the state. There is no recognized certification in billboard studies in the industry, although there have been some suggestions and recommendations that perhaps Federal Highway Administration provides some webinars or courses or training to, to educate and help foster the involvement of traffic engineers in this area.
Right. As a matter of fact, you, you provide a testimony in the, in the case where the judge ultimately declared that digital is appropriate.
That's correct, as a part of this, this billboard location in Franklin.
Right, okay. All right, Ms. Dolan, were you retained by the applicant to provide a, basically, I guess, a, a traffic safety analysis as it relates to this particular application?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Would you tell the board and the public what went into your analysis?
Sure. And this was in preparation for the proceeding before the, for the judge, and also for the proceedings before the zoning board here in Franklin. I had reviewed the other applications that I was involved with, one in Edison and one, I believe, in Ocean Township. And I had gone through the NJDOT requirements for the permitting and regulation of outdoor advertising, and also reviewed a number of studies that have been available from various sources, including journal articles from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, information from the Federal Highway Administration, information from outdoor advertising agencies, information by private traffic consultants, and also consulted with NJDOT regarding outdoor advertising permits, particularly as related to digital billboards.
And did you also have any discussions with anybody from outdoor advertising?
From outdoor advertising at NJDOT, yes. Specifically as related to New Jersey and its history of issuing permits and what went into some of the, the regulations here at the state level.
Okay, all right. Now, there are two provisions of the ordinance that I'd like to address. And the first provision, and let's get it out of the way, that's the provision that the judge struck down and appears. It appears on page five, it's item number 3A of Mr. Healy's report. I just want to clarify what the NJDOT regulates and what the court struck out and what the applicant is willing to do, so that it's very, very clear if this board approves the billboard, what will be the criteria. Okay, so I want to address that to you. No billboard or billboard display area, and I'm reading from the ordinance, or portion thereof shall rotate. So, is it your understanding that the NJDOT has a regulation prohibiting that?
That is correct. No, no moving parts whatsoever.
Okay, and you heard the applicant's commitment here tonight that there'll be no moving parts?
Yes.
Okay. Move, produce noise or smoke?
Not permitted by NJDOT.
Okay. Give the illusion of movement.
Absolutely not permitted for, for digital billboards specifically.
Okay. And that's it, right?
That's correct. And I, I believe that some of the, the moving part issues came from static billboards that may have had mechanized moving parts. That would apply to a static billboard, and, and more specifically, the, the blinking animation or video would be more specifically associated with the digital billboard.
So, basically, if the board approves this application, there could be a condition to comply with the NJDOT regulations where appropriate, correct?
We, we couldn't obtain or maintain our permit from NJDOT if any of these things existed. So, DOT prohibits moving parts or visual-changing imagery, and we have to renew our permit annually. So, we can't keep the permit if we were in violation, but the permit won't, wouldn't be issued if, if we were in violation. And we heard from the Dactronics Expert that the mechanisms within the digital billboard itself wouldn't even provide for that.
Okay. Now, the other item of the ordinance that I'd like you to address, and it was partially addressed by Mr. Weeb, and that relates to page six, item 3F of Mr. Healy's report. The ordinance states that no billboard shall be erected so as to cause any visual obstruction to traffic or impair traffic control devices. Did you look at that ordinance?
Yes.
Did you apply what the applicant is proposing to that ordinance?
Yes.
All right, and could you elaborate on, on that issue?
Certainly. The, the location of the billboard as presented and shown on the site plan and discussed by Mitch Ardmann is clearly in a location where it would not obstruct a driver's ability to see the, through moving traffic on the system, nor will the proposed billboard block any signage. There is no traffic control signage in the immediate vicinity of this proposed billboard. There are advisory signs and information signs, but those will not be blocked in any way by this, by the signage. And again, I would say that this provision of the ordinance also is a requirement of NJDOT for both static and multiple message boards.
Okay. And specifically with the eight-second interval, you heard Mr. Weeb, and is it a fact that that's an NJDOT regulation, and they do allow eight-second?
NJDOT requires a, an eight-second hold and an instantaneous transition from one static message to the next.
Okay.
That's a requirement of our permit.
Right. And then you heard the federal highway, you familiar with the federal highway regulations?
Yes.
Okay. And they go to the six to eight seconds?
Six to eight seconds.
Okay. Okay, and you don't see that, do you have an opinion as to whether that eight-second hold creates any visual obstruction to traffic or impair traffic control devices?
Well, certainly not in the, in the reviewing capacity of NJDOT's group, because they have the requirements that we must adhere to. So, this has been a proven rate of change throughout New Jersey on all digital billboards, and it has been approved and is continuing to be approved for all digital billboard applications. So, it's a pretty standard hold length, and it's my understanding that this is a standard hold length outside of New Jersey as well. So, certainly, it's proven acceptable throughout the state in all other cases where NJDOT has issued a permit for a digital billboard.
All right. Mr. Healy further observes, and he notes that there's another section of the ordinance, section 112-109 point G, which similarly prohibits any sign that may, quote, interfere with, mislead or confuse vehicular traffic. Do you have an opinion as to whether this billboard backslash sign, if approved, would interfere, mislead, or confuse vehicular traffic?
I would again point to a very similar regulation from NJDOT that says that advertisements that are on this billboard cannot resemble traffic control devices. So, that is, again, something we must comply with at the state level.
I don't have any further questions.
I have one question.
with, mislead or confuse vehicular traffic. Do you have an opinion as to whether this billboard backslash sign, if approved, would interfere, mislead, or confuse vehicular traffic?
I would again point to a very similar regulation from NJDOT that says that advertisements that are on this billboard cannot resemble traffic control devices. So that is, again, something we must comply with at the state level.
I don't have any further questions.
I have one question. As a traffic expert, could you make a comment about the effect of these signs on the safety of the driving public?
I've reviewed many studies, and there have been some very specific and detailed studies by Tantella Associates for message boards where they've studied the accident rates at two tenths of a mile intervals on either side of billboards for four years while they were still static, and then four years after they'd gone digital. And there was no increase in accident rates or number of accidents in these sections. There's been no correlation of an increase in accidents with the conversion of digital billboards. So the NJDOT, if we go specifically to here in New Jersey, has adopted the spacing distances in order to help to maintain or maximize traffic safety. They've required the eight-second hold, and that is similar to some of the hold times that I've seen in these various studies. So there's been nothing that has conclusively shown that the installation or the transformation from a static billboard to a digital billboard causes an increase in crash rates approximate to the sign locations.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
One question for you. The eight-second hold, you know what the basis of that is? Suppose I was an advertiser and I said, just making this up, of course, I want a 12-second hold. Could I get, would they be allowed to do that?
Would they be allowed to? I believe the way...
Is eight seconds a minimum or is eight seconds a maximum?
It's a minimum.
It's a minimum.
So they could go longer? If I was an advertiser...
If an advertiser, I don't know the technology.
Well, I mean, I think you can set a hold for anything.
The answer is true, yes. If some particular advertiser, all right, you've got a digital billboard messaging eight-second intervals.
Frank, what I'm trying to get to is that eight-second hold, now we're talking about traffic safety, I'm trying to understand the correlation between the hold time and what may be the traffic safety issue, if there is any. That's all.
I don't think that there is one.
So the hold time is arbitrary?
Correct. DOT, our DOT has said that they wanted to go with a little longer, but it seems to be somewhat arbitrary. And again, based on the studies I've seen, there's been no correlation to that hold time and accident rates.
It's just somebody's...
Well, I think there's some federal highway standards that initiated it, but then it's on a state-by-state basis to adopt the standard.
Madam, I think there's some, just logically, there's some basis to have a standard, because if you...
Oh, I'm not arguing with that, I'm just wondering what...
Who's every second?
No, no.
Who's every two seconds?
Every two hours, no.
Driver would have changing...
I'm wondering if that has an effect on the driver. No, I'm just thinking, I'm driving down the road, I got, comes up for eight seconds, and in one tenth of a second, it changes to another sign, do I, a hundredth of a second, excuse me, do I, does that distract me? I'm just curious. I don't know the answers. I'm not, that's how I feel.
Nothing has suggested that it is a distraction.
Pardon?
Nothing, none of the studies that I've reviewed have indicated that it is a distraction significant to cause a change in accident patterns on the roadways.
All right. It is what it is. Okay. Somebody just made it up.
Are there any other questions from the board for the witness at this time?
Twelve, eighty-five.
No, I'll entertain a motion if we're all done to, oh, we have Mr. Chadwick.
Yes. All right, thank you, Ms. Dolan. Mr. Chadwick, they almost, I almost forgot about you, but you're here.
At a horse ranch. Good evening.
We've seen Mr. Chadwick many times.
Raise his right hand, though.
I don't know, there was a guy sitting there.
Can we swear, Mr. Chadwick, in, Mr. Bryce, that's okay?
I had a technical...
Okay.
I think he took off.
All right, Mr. Chadwick, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
John, do you still have your professional planner's license?
I do.
Okay. And testified many times before this board?
I want to see it.
Okay. All right, John, were you retained by the applicant E&amp;J Equities to do a planning and zoning analysis with respect to this application as it relates to the 2C variances that are being applied for?
Yes.
Okay. You want to take the board as briefly as you can and the public with those two variances? Bearing in mind that Mr. Healy has reviewed the application for the variances and has indicated that they're technical variances.
I'll attempt to be very brief on this. Mr. Healy gave a comment that he believed they're technical variances, and I concur. And let's just define technical variance on these. One of the variances is for a through lot, whether you approve this application or not, it's a through lot, exists. That regulation really goes to a subdivision application, but referring to A2, you have a 30-plus acre parcel stretching from 287 over to Elizabeth, that isn't what this definition tried to regulate, nor is a subdivision involved. And then the other quirk to this is 287, although a street, under your ordinance, we have no access. So it's not a through lot to anything. So my judgment, it's clearly an exception to the rule, and the actual proposal for the billboard has no relevance whatsoever.
Right, so basically, whether they approve this application or not, they have a through, we have a through lot now, and after the application, if it's approved, you have a through lot. Is that basically it? Do you see any substantial detriment, if they approve the variance, you've given the positive criteria, do you see any substantial detriment to the zone plan and scheme?
No, and for the reasons I've just stated.
All right. How about the public good? You see any detriment to the public good?
No.
Okay. All right, what's the second variance?
The other is a variance for a structure to abut a street. This is really municipal land use law regulation. In our case, we do abut a public street, but we choose to have access. And for those who are familiar with the Rotoclip site, we have a basic roadway leading from Davison into our property with sidewalks and buildings off that, and it extends on a bridge over the stream. We will come up to service this facility with a car parked at the curb and walk about 30 feet over to the structure. So effectively, we have a street on-site and a bridge to the site, which we will provide access for. And the access really comes down to, under the municipal land use law, is to provide adequate public health and safety. Here's a structure that's not occupied, it's metal, it's not the issue that the municipal land use law addresses, and you have a comment from the police department that they have no comment.
Fire department.
Fire department, they have no comment. I concur with that, I believe we meet the standards.
And again, do you believe that if the board were to grant this, for this particular application, which is a billboard rather than a house or something else, a factory or whatever, that it would have no substantial detrimental impact on the zone plan and scheme?
Correct.
And would, if they approve it, do you have an opinion as to whether it would have a substantial detrimental impact on the public good?
It would not.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Are there any questions from the board for this witness?
I'll just give the board a very quick illustration of the second ordinance or variance here, that having to have frontage on a street giving access, if this was a shopping center, obviously, you wouldn't approve a shopping center if it wasn't on a street that the public could access from the roadway. Here, this is a billboard, probably has one person coming a month, and they're going to have access via ineasement through Rotoclip's property. So that's why it's technical in nature. It's technically required, but clearly, it's the purpose of the ordinance really does not come into play. And similarly, you know, I agree with Mr. Chadwick's testimony in terms of the through lot. It's technically a through lot, because they have frontage on 287 and probably almost a mile away, half mile away. They also have frontage on Elizabeth. It's not really what the ordinance is meant to regulate. So I agree with Mr. Chadwick's testimony.
Hey, John, is this like the first time that the two of you have been in 100% agreement?
I thought so.
What do you think?
I'll answer that, yes.
If we couldn't agree on these two, then there'd really be issues.
I just wanted to hear John say yes, that's all.
Now, if we come to agree on anything, that's the next thing.
Well, that's a whole different issue, John.
If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to open to the public.
Madam Chairman, I move that we open this application to the public for a hearing.
Second.
Madam Chairman, seeing no one coming forward, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. The applicant rests, should I make a closing statement or...
That's, that's, you're prerogative. You won't mind.
You just say, please approve us.
We're asking the board for advice?
The board doesn't want to hear you speak anymore, Frank. They've had enough. You earned your money tonight. Yeah. I believe the evidence presented...
It's not just tonight, it's the last three years.
I believe the evidence that's been presented is in full support of the conditional use request, the preliminary and final site plan, and the 2C variances. And I think the board in discretion can grant the application.
I'll entertain a motion.
Can I just make one request?
Of course.
I know E&amp;J Equities owns Lot 32, which, from one of the diagrams, is in visual line of sight from 287, I guess it would be southbound. And I just want to know that no trees would be cutting down, some of it looked like it was being obstructed on Lot 32, to make a better visual for this billboard on 12.02. Is there, are there any plans to cut trees down on Lot 32?
We don't have any plans.
Would you be averse to...
Well, one thing, we have a, an assessment on that property right now to conduct forestry, and we actively sell wood from that land. So to prohibit me from cutting down trees there would specifically go against my tax assessment on that property.
I don't think that's what he's speaking of. I think the question is, in order to put up these billboards, are there going to be trees taken down along 287, basically?
Well, yeah.
You know, whether on your property or not.
That's not correct. It looks like two are going to be relocated.
Not, not on this lot. I'm not qualified to answer this.
Mitch Hardman, again, for the record, so none on Lot 32. There were a few, as noted, that were on Lot 12.02, the subject of the application to come down, but none on this corridor, which you're referring to on Lot 32.
Shown on this plan.
Correct. Yeah.
But basically, in order to get this up, you show, you have shown on the plan the trees that are going, that are going to be relocated, and the number is two.
Correct.
Okay. Does that...
Well, the state already did a good job cutting down all the important trees and vegetation.
I guess, I guess my concern would be that, one, if this were approved today, and, you know, at all the conditions and things that are around, that Lot 32 isn't clear-cut for a better visual on southbound 287 for the billboard, if there's a way to make an assurance to that effect.
This billboard is 45 feet off the ground. It's, I believe it's one foot from the property line. If there were any trees to be cleared, it would be on the state property side of the fence, which we're not allowed to enter, it's a limited access highway. I am aware that last year, the state came and cleared a lot of trees because there was a dry period over a summer, and they were worried about fires burning along the edges of the highways. But we found out about that the same time the rest of the town did.
I think it's a good question, in the sense that you look at photograph six that was here some middle, where you only can see, probably you don't see half the billboard. And if the, if the trees were selectively cut down around that, you could, I don't even know from this picture if they're on your property, or how far in front of the billboard they are, but that, that could be a potential issue.
And I am concerned about that.
Yeah, and just for the record, so those are within the bulk on the 287 right-of-way. They said we had it for safety beyond the shoulder, so once you're into the lanes, there's better visibility. So there won't be a need to cut specifically any on Lot 32 for this project, just the ones we have shown.
Does that answer?
I mean, if I could get a statement on the record that there will be no trees cut down to make the view better on Lot 32 for the billboard?
I'll make, the statement I'll make on the record is, we have no plans to cut trees down, and from the highway, from the three lanes on 287 southbound, there's no trees that we would be able to cut down that are on our property. It would all be on the state fence side. I have, there's nothing I could cut down.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chairman, I would move approval of the application with all of the various conditions and stipulations that have been mentioned at this hearing.
And knowing that with the litigation before the appellate court, that that will be the final say.
Right.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Chairwoman McGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Potasnik?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a happy holiday and a Merry Christmas, or whatever. And then just, just to correct slightly, Mr. McGyver, the appellate division may or may not be the final say, it may be a final court decision somewhere, right? Okay, thank you.
Yes. To put it in legal... Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
When you hear this whole hearing...
Check it up on it, huh? What's your...
Um, no, we have... Committee reports? Committee reports? Are next? No? Work session, new business? No? Do we have executive session plan? Nope. No? Then I'll entertain a German. We're in German.
See y'all next year. Have a Happy Christmas and a Merry New Year.